All right, welcome to the January 21st, 2015 Regular Meeting of the Larkspur City Council. Can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Hillard.
Here.
Councilmember Morrison.
Here.
Mayor Chu.
Here.
Vice Mayor Wade.
Here.
And Councilmember Harrow.
Here.
Okay, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) But the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda are two things in which the council will adjourn to closed session. First item is a public employee performance evaluation under Government Code Section 54957. Second item is a conference with legal counsel on existing litigation under Government Code 54596. Right, the council just returned from closed session and there are no reportable actions. Next item on our agenda tonight is approval of a consent calendar. If, unless anyone has anything they'd like to pull for further discussion or any amendments.
Mayor Chu, I wanted to tell you there are no warrants to be adopted this evening and that the agenda has been placed on your dais because the item that is at the very end should be 9.1 and it had originally gone out as 7.1 and the numbering was changed, so that's the explanation for that.
Okay, thank you. There was also one other thing that Councilmember Morrison had noted was that on the staff report for Ordinance 1000, at the bottom there's reference to Ordinance 999, but since that's a staff report item, just a minor correction there if you put it back online and, but the actual ordinance itself can still be approved. So if there are no corrections or comments, I'll take a motion to approve the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, motion and second.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Okay, now we have our city manager's oral report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I only have a few items to report this evening. The first is, three years ago, my counterpart in Sausalito proposed that the cities look at starting a management academy, a program to start to groom from within folks who could rise up in their ranks and be trained in sort of the broader perspective of what municipal management is like. These academies exist in several places, so there's plenty of examples, and Marin County actually has one in-house, they're large enough to do that in-house. They started it in the Southern Marin communities and did two of them each of the last two years, and they were very well received, the class of 21 students each year. This year, they invited Larkspur to participate, and I'm pleased to say that we are sending two of our employees and one Central Marin Police Authority employee to the academy, and I want to acknowledge Sausalito's providing the administrative staffing right now of the program, but we really appreciate and are excited that we're able to have some staff participate. And I think, you know, we like to talk about shared services and often they're really large programs and we try to focus on the budget issues. This is a small program with very little cost, but it's a, I think, in addition to the fact that we're grooming next generations of leadership, we're having folks in disciplines who don't necessarily get to interact with their counterparts, interact with their counterparts on a monthly basis for an entire year, and they're getting the chance to talk about how they might be able to cooperate with one another, and so I'm excited that there's potentially some ideas to come out of that. So I really want to acknowledge Adam Pulitzer from Sausalito, who actually is a Larkspur resident, I'll tout in that respect too, for starting that program and for inviting Larkspur to participate this year.
Who are those employees?
We're, we are sending Kristen Tecky, our newest manager, our new senior planner, we've promoted her to senior planner recently, and then we're sending Jennifer Emery from the Finance Department, our minis, our accounting specialist, and then Zenetta, is it, Jim left, I think her last name's Fileto?
Fileo.
Fileo, thank you, to, to go from the, she's the chief's executive assistant. So, those are our three employees that are going this year, and we hope will be invited to continue to participate in coming years.
Good, thank you.
I also went to the Marin Managers Association Annual Retreat yesterday where I was, made the new president of the Managers Association, for better or for worse, so those of you active in MCC, MCC, I'll see a little bit more of me since I now have a responsibility to liaison more with that group. I brought it up though because we had Michael Coleman come, and you, I think all of you have had the benefit probably at some point in attending a league function of having Michael speak, he's the league analyst on financial issues, he does all sort of the statewide look at what's going on and different trends. And there's two I wanted to tell the council about, one I'm very concerned about and one I'm pretty excited about. So I'll give you the bad news first, which is he's projecting that over the next five to 10 years, we'll see gas tax drop 23% as a revenue stream, so that's pretty startling. And we're gonna have to be, start preparing to deal with that. Now, we all kind of instinctively knew, because we've seen that trend going down, but they now have more data behind their projections and they feel pretty confident we're gonna see that kind of decline in that tax over the next few years. On an exciting note, though, the Senate has come up with the idea of an infrastructure district to replace redevelopment. They've sort of had the, "We're sorry, we took your important tool away" cities legislation passed. What's exciting is you don't have to have been a redevelopment city to take a look at this new tool, and you have the opportunity as a community to look at whether or not you might be comfortable borrowing against growth in your property tax, and if you can find a lender who's willing to do that, you can actually try to leverage anticipated growth in your property tax across your district. And the exciting thing is unlike redevelopment, public facilities are potentially eligible for this financing, so we're taking a look at that. Actually, Skye's the first person who told me about it, the league's now getting pretty excited and behind it, and some of the larger cities will probably pursue some of this this year and give us some examples to look at. A little trickier in Marin, because we don't have as much growth, new growth opportunity to capitalize on, but we do have a history of strong property tax base, and it might be something that's useful to us as we deal with our infrastructure challenges. So, been a very nuts and bolts couple of weeks for me here focusing on these type of, types of topics, and I guess that's sort of the nature of the new year as we all start to put our fiscal hats on and look forward. Other than that, compliments to all of the public works and public safety staff for how they took us through the holidays and how they brought us into the new year. It's actually been the quietest year since I've been here, and kudos to all of them for making that happen.
Okay, any question, we got a question here, all right.
Could you please make a note, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, that I would like to talk about parking and parking districts under the topic of the infrastructure improvement opportunity you just described, the new tool, to see if there's the will to make this a public conversation about how we can improve both parking and property values in our downtown and solve some of the, the ongoing dilemma of economic development constraints that currently burden the properties in the historic downtown.
Okay, yeah, we, we'll be meeting tomorrow on future agendas, so we'll bring that up. Anyone else have any convers, questions or comments for City Manager? No? Okay, now's the time for council member comments, does anyone have anything they'd like to report out on or make a comment? Yes?
After reading the article in the IJ today about Mark Levine's legislation to encourage reopening the third lane on the bridge, I emailed Assemblymember Levine that, reminding him that one of the top priorities at both the TAM workshop and the outcome of the Greenbrier Corridor Working Group was to push the design and study of a direct 101 to 580 set of connectors, which is the real fix for congestion of 101 at peak periods. And I would like to discuss at this council, and again, a topic for the retreat upcoming, that we adopt a resolution tracking the, the fact that this is a top priority at TAM, it's an ongoing problem in the Twin Cities, and it's just getting worse, and now the impacts are spreading, the negative impacts are spreading into the neighborhoods. Illustrating that, it takes an hour to get across the freeway at peak period, especially on Friday afternoons, you keep, and after 3:00 PM, people just don't go out, and if you're hoping to go north, you have to go down to Tamil Pious, so you have to go south to Tamil Pious Interchange to get on the freeway in order to get around all the problems being caused by the bridge traffic clogging Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. Nobody's gonna fix this except Larkspur or Corder Madera working together. San Rafael has been stalling this for over a decade, making the topic dormant at the TAM, so I'm gonna be bringing it up tomorrow night, and I would like our council to take leadership on this and adopt a resolution identifying the, the actions taken to date both by our Board of Supervisors, Steve Kinsey, and the TAM, both through the Greenbrier Working Group and the last TAM workshop that took place, or Strategic Planning Workshop that took place, where this is a very top priority. We need to start mobilizing public opinion on this in order to, to put pressure on the TAM, San Rafael Mayor and their council, and our legislators to become actors in this. If you look at traffic on Magnolia, it's, it's even impacting Magnolia traffic and certainly Tamil Vista, especially in light of the, the development that's going on there. So I, I don't think it, we can wait any longer to step up and even if we ruffle some feathers in our council member, in San, council members in San Rafael, I think the public will straighten all of this out once we shine a bright light on this, because they've expressed it over and over again, and nobody really has crystallized this into a, a, the words just haven't been made clear for everybody to understand. Everybody gets it that there's a big problem, but the fix has just not been focused, so the mass, massive numbers of pub, the members of the public can speak to it. So I'm encouraging the Larkspur Council to take leadership on this, and I'd appreciate it if we could make this one of the prime topics at our February 7th retreat, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Again, it's, we've already discussed this at least in advance for our agenda tomorrow, and it's something that we'll talk about. We don't know exactly how we're set for timing on the retreat, but I would expect that this is an important issue and that we'll try and get it at least on a council agenda if we can't get it on the retreat agenda. Okay, does anyone else have anything they'd like to report?
I do. On a lighter note, I went to the Larkspur Corder Madera School District Board meeting, and I would like to share with you that they're beginning the phase two of their construction projects. This spring, they're gonna complete the hall modernization, and they're gonna put a new wing at the Neil Cummins and Cove School, and they're also working closely with their contractor and their design to deal with the floods that happened a week ago, so they're on top of that. They have a new Facebook, and we can follow them on Twitter. The district also has a new application for parents that can buy in all of the district's communication, so this is the first app of, of any school in Marin, that's kind of cool. And Valerie Pitt wanted me to praise the Central Marin Police Authority, they gave, they provided a two-hour training for all the staff on active shooting response, and they said that the police force was quite professional and appreciated their leadership.
Thank you.
As the Larkspur representative to the A-BAG Committee, I just want to refer my council members to look at their agenda for the meeting next Mon, Wednesday, the dinner, the MCC, MCC and Pat Eklund's attachment, and in regards to the draft, draft comments that are gonna be delivered to the A-BAG leadership, and if you have concerns or questions about that, Pat's your resource to talk to.
What's her timeframe for that?
I think she wants it to be finalized by February 14th, I believe.
Okay. Kevin, do you have anything?
I just want to, just briefly mention, I've had the pleasure of getting involved with a little working group comprised of city council members from a number of jurisdictions, particularly in Southern Marin, Sausalito, Belvedere, some others, to focus on city perspectives on sea level rise. We've had a couple of meetings, I haven't been able to attend all of them, but I did attend the most recent one. There's a perception that while the county is, is taking some initiative with respect to sea level rise from their perspective, you know, my own view is that they, they've focused appropriately on sea level rise impacts in West Marin as much as anything else, but that we have a real opportunity to play a leadership role from the city's perspectives on compiling information that the different cities have put together over time to address that issue from their own perspectives, working together, and then ultimately, as the year progresses, working with the county to help put together kind of a more comprehensive strategy to deal with sea level rise impacts within our respective communities. So we're in the process of doing that. We had an opportunity, I think, to endorse an effort to get some grant money to help with that, and I think that letter's now, now gone out. So it's a, it's a, it's a very important issue reinforced by our recent title situation this past week, it's a real reminder of the potential impacts on increasingly elevated level in, in the bay is gonna be impacting our communities, and I'm hoping we'll be able to play a leadership role in moving that effort forward.
Thank you. You know, the MCC, MCC had put that committee together under Kate Collin, I believe.
Actually, Kate's involved in that from, from San Rafael, but actually Claire McCollough is kind of taking, she's been more the organizing person in that.
Okay, are you the rep on that, of Larkspur's rep?
Yep.
Okay, so you're already involved in that?
No, that's what I'm doing, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
There's a meeting tomorrow, correct, on that? Is Kate having a meeting?
I think you might be mixing up groups.
Yeah.
Kate Collins is the homeless, homeless.
No, no, I thought Kate's having one on flight tomorrow.
Uh, this isn't really focused on flooding per se, this is more on the general issue of sea level rise. We had a meeting last week.
Was it last week, maybe it was last week then?
Yeah. That may be what you're thinking about.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I only have one thing to report out on, and that's a follow-up with the Finance and Policy Committee for the Marin Telecommunications Agency to address Larkspur's desire to withdraw from the MTA. The goal of the F&amp;P Committee is to keep Larkspur in this JPA, and one of the suggestions that has come out is that the funding for projects that do not have to do anything with the core mission of the MTA then be placed as kind of like a cafeteria plan thing, it'll become optional, and it's similar to the way that Marin Clean Energy was set up, or the Marin Energy Authority before it became Marin Clean Energy. Because Marin Clean Energy, as you remember, was a, a program within the MEA, and any member could participate in that program and then would share in either the contribution or the associated expenses. So if a situation where we did not want to participate in the funding of the CMCM, for example, then that would be an option that we would opt out of. So that hasn't been fully vetted out at this point, but that was the suggestion that was made, that was also the number one point that Larkspur had raised to them in terms of, well, what would Larkspur accept as, you know, a condition for staying in the MTA? And it was basically that if we didn't want to participate in something that wasn't part of the core mission, that you wouldn't have to. Yes?
Wasn't also, uh, city control of the franchise fees as opposed to waiting for them to determine what they skim off before they send us a check, the issue?
Yeah, and that, that's a simple matter to resolve, the, because ultimately, if we got the franchise fee money, we would then get an invoice and we'd be sending them the money back.
But that would be our preference.
Yeah, and that was also discussed, but that's, that's the lesser of the issues that we have to really deal with.
But can't they figure pol, adopt policies that essentially reduce our franchise fees at the top, take right off the top before?
Well, that, that's what they're doing now.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, that didn't seem to have any objections in, in the discussion, it was more a question of...
But my, my understanding was our, our reason for wanting to pull out was control of the franchise fees.
Yeah, but the control of the franchise fees is, is secondary to the actual policy that was the decision for not having control of the franchise fees. Other cities, as a majority, could vote to fund a project that we might not feel is a good use of our franchise fees, but whether we have to pay it off the top or we send them a check back in its current arrangement, we're still obligated to make that payment.
If I could, I think the way we framed it to the MTA was that if we could come up with a, a solution that ensured that all franchise fee money beyond the agreed-upon administrative cost of MTA came directly to Larkspur, that that would resolve that particular issue for us, and the broader issue was one of control of franchise fees in terms of putting them into any future projects, and I, so I think what Mayor Chu's getting to is, what does it mean to be a member of the MTA? What have you agreed that you will pay versus what might you pay? And I think the broader discussion MTA may finally be having after a couple of years is that latter question of, well, are there things that we might tell the members we'd like them to pay, but we won't financially obligate them to pay? And we had put that in the letter, that potentially there were tiers of membership as a possible way of dealing with this, that maybe some members would contribute more money and have more rights in terms of pursuing these other policy interests, and maybe some members like Larkspur would stick to just giving what we need to give to meet our basic needs that we join the MTA to resolve.
So is, is the relationship between the Media Center and the, the MTA Board been clarified?
No, and that was a third issue that was raised, but that's really part of a separate discussion at this point, because, you know, one of the questions that came up in that meeting which I asked, well, they asked me, they said, can you think of another thing in which we, we being the members funded something outside of our core mission? And I said, yeah, when we took on the project to litigate against Comcast. You know, the CMCM has nothing to do with the MTA and vice versa in terms of litigating to get early payment of the franchise fees under the statewide franchise, and I'll briefly explain that. When initial franchise agreement was created, it was created where Comcast prepaid all the, all the, what they call public edge, public access, education and government fees, PEG fees.
They front-loaded the franchise agreement.
They front-loaded, the front, exactly. So the condition, or not condition, it was reasonable to expect that Comcast would want to recover those fees before being placed under a different agreement for the next round of fees.
The state, the state.
The statewide franchise fees. You know, we were converting from a local franchise to a statewide franchise, the local franchise had something like 47 cents, you were seeing 47 cents under the PEG fees, and now it's just 1% of your video, your, your, your video services. Comcast expected the full amount that was front-loaded to be reimbursed before the 1% was paid out to the CMCM. And the CMCM wanted the MTA to sue Comcast to have both of them being paid concurrently. And those legal fees were actually covered by the MTA, and now that it's no longer a closed-session item, not all the agencies agreed to doing that, it was like a seven to four vote with Larkspur dissenting on that arrangement. So again, it was something outside of the core mission of the MTA, and to your point, the MTA should be separate and autonomous from the CMCM. The CMCM is what they call the direct access provider, they are, we have a vendor service relationship, but it's actually tied much closer together because you have a city manager that sits on their board, you have an MTA board member that sits on their board, and within just board discussions, there are either inferred or explicit comments sometimes made by the CMCM, board members stating that the executive office of the MTA is not being supportive of the CMCM, when in fact, that's not her role. You know, it's really more of a neutral position that she has to take, you know, she's presenting information to the MTA board, which has a fiduciary responsibility for managing the franchise fees and a, and, you know, in behalf of the members. And then, of course, the CMCM provides public access, education and government programming. So, you know, it, there really needs to be more distant, and what I've suggested before is that, you know, you can combine it together if that's what you want, but right now, that's not how it's set up.
Is the Media Center still described as a contractor to the MTA in the, in the formation documents?
Yes.
Why isn't that enforced?
You know, I, I don't know if I can answer that question, I mean, it's been...
I'm getting concerned we're gonna be getting too far afield of the agenda.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we, we can certainly bring it back for discussion, but...
Maybe, maybe when there's time, we could have an agenda item where we could clarify this a little bit.
I think, I think we'll need to review it again, only because at some point, we'll need to have the discussion when the MTA members come back and give a decision as to whether they're willing to accept our terms or not, and whether that's yes or no, you know, we will then decide whether we terminate our, our relationship with them. June 30th is the earliest that we can pull out of the MTA.
Are you satisfied with the way things are going, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, and in fact, what I think might be helpful for the councils, I'll, I'll email out, I'll to, to all of you the letter that we sent, which is in the public record from your meeting, and it might remind you the conditions that we laid out by which you had directed Mayor Chu to work towards staying in the MTA. We had, we had laid out three potential paths that the city might stay if, if MTA could figure out how to get onto one of these paths, so...
Yeah, and the third path of having tiers of membership was not amenable, but I believe it's resolved by having opt-in and opt-out participation on things that are not considered part of the core mission of the MTA.
I look forward to your email.
Yeah, me too.
All right, so that concludes the council member reports, doesn't look like there are members of the public for public comments, there are no public hearing items, so we'll move to the first business item, which is a report on our community facility.
And before I turn it over to Mary Grace, I reserved acknowledging the library and recreation staff when I made my city manager comments for this item, I, I want to impress upon the council that we are all putting in a lot of time and, and just super excited about working on this project, but the Recreation Director Dick Whitley and particularly the Library Director France Gordon have just gone above... Gordon, have just gone above and beyond in their contribution of time over the last several weeks to help the consultants analyze the programming needs of Larkspur. And it really showed in a technical meeting today how much their investment of time has moved the process along in very short order, and I really want to thank them for that.
Great. Good evening, everyone. Just gonna give a brief update here on where we are with our Larkspur Library and Community Center. I've been visiting the various commissions and boards and giving them an update and opportunity to join us as our cheerleaders on this project to engage the public because they are a key, key element of making this process work. The update I've been giving is just helping everybody reorient themselves with where the site is, which is on the Rose Lane project at Doerty Drive at Rose Lane. And helping people understand that the goal of this process is not to revisit what was done in the master plan. There was wonderful, wonderful work done as part of the master plan. This process is to take that and move forward. So, recognizing that, some of, it's on, yeah. The master plan objectives identified honoring the past and embracing the future. And our consultants have really taken this to heart. It's really ensuring that this facility and the design of this facility is Larkspur. How's the process and the players work? We have basically three arms to our committees or community involvement here. And we have an advisory committee, which involves two members of our city council, a member of the library bar, a member of Parks and Rec, a member of the planning commission, and then the city staff directors, which are the recreation director, librarian, city manager, myself, the public works director, and the planning director. The advisory committee is helping the consultant team by vetting out which directions to go with the public, making sure they're interpreting what the public has identified in the master plan and what the public is saying, and helping make sure we're going the right direction. The technical committee is the consultant team as well as the same city staff. And the technical committee brings to the table a look from the standpoint of, one day, we're going to be responsible for running this facility, for helping bring the programs to life and serving the public. And so we look at, how are the day-to-day maintenance operations going to go? How is the library going to function? How's their storage going to work? How are they going to be able to take books in and out and deal with technology? How will recreation run programs there? How will it all function together? And so those elements are important in how the design of the facility goes, to make sure, at the end of the day, we're not having to convert a community room to storage because we didn't plan that appropriately. The most important member of this team is the Larkspur community, and I cannot impress this strongly enough. When you're doing a community project and trying to bring the vision of community to life, we have to hear from the Larkspur community. So, engaging in community, inviting them to come to meetings, inviting them to visit the website and take our survey monkey and keep watching for those up-to-date. Send us emails if something comes up to them that interests them, or they have a question or just a bit of input regarding what they believe this facility will be and how it will work in their day-to-day life. Really, really important. Our schedule is pretty strong here. We have about six months to complete the schematic design and design review process. We've initiated this process. We've had two technical meetings now and one advisory committee meeting. Our first community workshop is scheduled for January twenty-ninth, and we're trying to get the word out. The postcards have been mailed to over nine thousand homes. We have a webpage up, and we will have posters up in the recreation department, the library and up here in city hall before the end of this week. We are anticipating that if everything runs as we're planning, by June, we'll be bringing the project to city council for basically acceptance at the end of the day, after we go through the planning commission process and what have you. This is really a process that the city council has initiated and what have you, and so bringing it back to you at the end of the day, we felt was important. The project goals, these are coming out of the master plan. And we felt this diagram here is really key to helping understand what the community decided at the end of the day for the master plan. And that wasn't to have two separate facilities, it was to have one integrated library and community center. And that was important. That's an important decision in how we move forward with design. The four words that came out of the master plan were to enrich, engage, adapt and sustain. So, this is a place where our community will be enriched with knowledge, information, and enhance the whole community. They can engage. It'll be a place where families can be served for all ages of the family. We don't have a facility like that in Larkspur. Right now, tots go one place, teens go another, adults go another. This will be a place where the entire family, entire community can be, can interact and be a part. We want this facility, or the community would like this facility to be adaptable, to be able to make sure that twenty years from now, we're not shutting the facility down for a huge remodel, that it can change as the demographic of the community changes, as the needs of the community change, and that it be sustainable, not just from the construction of the facility, but how it lives, that it will be able to sustain in the Larkspur community. Design values. Site presence, this came out time and time again, warm and inviting. This wasn't, isn't intended to be a facility that is standoffish. It's to be an extension of the Larkspur homes. Designed with a human scale, so that people are comfortable there. They can relate to it. They understand how it works with their day-to-day. But still have a strong identity and celebrate its civic role in the community. This has come up through questions through the community and what have you. We want to make sure that people know this is the Larkspur Library and Community Center. So that is an important thing to people. What is the building to feel like and be like? It's also to be warm and engaging, welcoming community and drawing them in, inviting them to be there, constructed and furnished with long-lasting materials so that sustainable quality at one more time. Complement the small-town character of Larkspur, but reflect the time, but have it enduring and timeless quality. We, I explain to people, it's one of those buildings that's envisioned to, you're not going to know that or identify, this was built in two thousand fifteen. It's going to just feel like Larkspur. And, again, be maximum flexibility and adaptable to change. The building and landscape sustainability, we want to, again, be environmentally conscious, economically conscious, culturally sustainable, reveal sustainable values to help educate the public, continue the education of why it's important that we reduce our carbon footprint, help people continue to learn that and live that, and promote an environmental stewardship, and then aspire to be the highest LEED certification that's economically feasible. And that was identified as a baseline of LEED Silver in the master plan. Site connectivity, to have a strong indoor/outdoor connection. I've explained to people, I go, as wonderful as our little library has at city hall, one thing that came out strong in the master plan, and I have to wonder if in part, it's because we don't have an outdoor piece to our city hall and our library. So, to have that connection and have the new facility be able to incorporate the outdoors in, and it is important to people. Take advantage of the views of Mount Tam and Blaisdale Ridge. This has gotten very positive. Yes, 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 please make sure that that doesn't get lost. It's important. We really relate Mount Tam with Larkspur, so to be able to, yes.
Are you looking for comments as you go through?
No, I'm just giving you an update.
When will be the good time to comment? Because I have a comment about this particular slide.
Sure, happy to...
In addition to the statements made there, I think there's some incredibly important, very specific locations on the site that have to do with site connectivity and entry points. The corner at Doerty and what's the, what's the...
Rose Lane.
Rose Lane, that's one. The other one is the entry point opportunity where Rose Lane turns, and there's a strong visual connection to the Lark Theater.
Correct, yeah, through the...
So I think those, I think those entry points need to show up in the site connectivity description.
Yes, and I believe there's an exhibit in the master plan that addresses that, as well as an important connection point at Rose Lane and Orchid, where multi-use paths come together as well, so...
Well, I think in addition to convenient and safe connections, I think strong connections with downtown and nearby schools need to be added to that.
Okay, I'll make sure that's identified. Public outreach, we can't stress enough how important this is. So, we have community meetings or workshops identified on both January twenty-nine down at the CNPA, the police station, and on February seventeen here at city hall. In addition to that, mailers have gone out, we have a webpage up, we have an email link to our request tracker. We will continue to make outreach through email and through our library and community center, or recreation center, to make sure people are aware. We'll be talking to the schools and, or sending blasts out through the schools to help spread the word as well. So, making sure that we reach community and all ages of community is really important, so... Oh, good, hopefully positive. So, this is our postcard that went out. This is the one side of it, identifying that this is our place. It's not, this is how I've explained to people who ask, I said, this isn't a building or a facility that a developer is building for the community. It is not something that's being dictated or mandated. This is a choice of the community of Larkspur. So, it's a choice right from the inception and the thought, all the way through the design and how the facility will serve the people in their day-to-day life. On the back, we have a quick little reference to where they can find information, encouraging them to join us, and that is where we are. So, we're excited about this process, and I am happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to give? Yes, go ahead.
You mentioned at the beginning that this was not to revisit the master plan.
That's correct.
I'm hoping that all the actors in the process don't feel compelled or bound to the site planning options that were described in the master plan, because I, for one, would not like to see the master plan reflect either one of the master plan options. I think a new one needs to be created.
I think how we got a first glimpse at some ideas for orientation of parking and access and what have you today. There's a lot that has to be worked out with the site plan. Through the public workshop, we'll be expecting to get more information on how people envision the outdoor space to be used and what have you. And the very pleasant thing with our consultant is, they really don't have a predisposed idea of what this is to be. They know that the master plan is kind of a guide document, gave some general ideas, but there really wasn't a fully developed site plan identified as part of the master plan. There were just some concept ideas of, here generally this, go here, this go here. So, I think really what we're going to see is a very interactive process with the public and developing something that will reflect with the public's idea of how they want to use this space on a day-to-day basis.
So, no one feels constrained by what was shown in the master plan?
I don't believe so.
Good, thank you.
If I could add, Mr. Mayor, I don't think anybody feels constrained by it, but it provides the guideline, and it was a lengthy process by the community group that produced the master plan. So, we have treated it like a guideline at our technical level. I would frame what we've done to date with the consultants is, take that guideline and ask some basic questions about, well, are some of the premises in these guidelines appropriate? To give a context to that, for example, these guideline diagrams talk about the parking lot having one of its ingress egress points on Orchid. Well, now that the property's developed, even the layman can see that's a bad idea. You know, when there was no development there, that was not as clear. So, we've been going through the master plan with that sort of look and actually saying, well, now we can put some practical thought and question into it. The more esoteric questions, I don't think we feel any constraint at the technical level about.
I apologize if my enthusiasm appears to be inappropriate. Just given my background and experience, I'm dying to get in there, but I'm being very careful to let the process play out, so I hope, I thank you for your understanding.
Okay, any other questions or comments from Mary Grace? Yes, go ahead.
Just two questions, one kind of a very specific one, more general, the latter first. In the context of the public participation, which of course, I agree completely, that's so critical to the success of this enterprise. Obviously, the issue of funding and fundraising is still hanging out there. How do you, how are you responding to questions about how that process will go forward?
So, this is my line. Talk to Catherine. I've explained to the public, I said, we don't have funding as yet for this. There has been a 501(c)(3) that's been established, and really, in order to really fully engage a fundraising process, we need to help people build the vision, bring it to life and what have you. So, that's what this process is about, and that in parallel, there'll be outreach regarding how the funding. And there's all kinds of options out there. Nothing's been wiped off the table, but the full gamut of how funding is to happen hasn't been established. I've gotten questions about, is the city going to issue a bond? I said, I can't answer that question. That'll be something that'll be considered by council at the appropriate time. So, you know, those questions are coming up, that's how we're answering them. And this is, it's very truthful. This is a very key element of getting through this design review process to help the community envision what this is to be. It's hard to commit dollars to something you don't really have the full rip on.
Absolutely, and really, the question was just honestly to get a sense of how that aspect of it is going. And do you feel like when you do provide that kind of a response, that people understand and are looking forward to the future and how that's going to play out?
Their understanding. I met with the Rose Lane community tonight, and, you know, they've expressed the desire that it be sooner rather than later. And, you know, people are anxious for it. They're excited about this facility, but they don't want it to be twenty years. They would like to have some concept.
My second question is kind of a more of a nerdy question, is are there, I mean, this may be way too early to have this kind of discussion, but is there a potential for incorporating solar panels and other kind of distributed energy capacity within the design? Is that something that people can be looking at, creative ways of doing that now?
Our consultant team is very, very experienced with sustainable design, so they'll be looking at different options for how to incorporate energy efficiency and what have you into the design. I'm sure that'll be considered. I'm sure that'll be considered. There's lots of cool things with respect to solar now, integrating them into roofing panels.
Solar panels are cheap right now, so...
But, you know, I'm sure that's something that they'll be looking at as part of the sustainable design.
And I'm sure that has only got to have the potential to be helpful in terms of the outreach to the community, in terms of the funding issues, the more that we can really convey to them, this is a real opportunity to do some innovative things that accomplishes more, I mean, has a broader perspective on the impact of this facility on our community at large. I think that that's got to be a helpful thing, so I encourage that.
This is one of the goals of the master plan, was to use this facility to help people understand sustainable living, and that gives the design all the way through the operation, how plantings are considered.
And that was certainly a theme when we met with the architects at the outset, and I encouraged that to be pursued.
Kevin, discussing about fundraising, Catherine and I are going to put together a committee, a fundraising committee that's going to assist us. So we just haven't started on that yet.
I don't have a question, because I sit on the advisory committee, but thank you, Mary Grace, for that good presentation. I think following up, a question I have is, how would you, what would be the best strategy for other council members who are not on that advisory committee to provide feedback? Would it be directly, would it be through us or directly to you, or how should we engage that?
So in terms of giving feedback directly to the staff, I'd say the best route would be for the council members to ask for one-on-one opportunities with us. And then to reverse that question, we're working on, for staff, and we'll provide to council some general outline of talking points and sort of where we are, where we're going, so that you, so that we all are on the same page in terms of what we're saying. Messages evolve as we get feedback from folks, and so making sure that we're keeping you up to date on sort of what we're hearing and what we're learning, I think is really important.
That would be helpful, and to add to that would be to follow up on Kevin's question about, a frequently asked question about the funding, if we can come up with an articulate, an articulate sentence or two, or a paragraph about the vision of the plan that way.
Yeah, so my answer's just a little bit more nerdy and financial than the public works director. So what I tell people is, it's going to take a big pot of money, and it's going to take a lot of different sources pouring into that pot. And the first one's the community, and there's a lot of ways for the community to decide how they want to contribute money, whether it's with their own private money, through donations, whether it's through taxes, I try to avoid the tax word, but through some sort of assessment, some combination thereof. This is more than two sentences, but, you know. And I keep thinking the state will, libraries will percolate back up to the top, and the state will show up again and say libraries are important again, so...
Yeah, Dan?
Question about parking strategy.
Yes.
Is the city giving itself the opportunity to have a parking strategy that allows sharing of parking resources to optimize the pedestrian friendliness for this? What I'm asking for is, I think, given the future, thinking about how the area, the shopping center, et cetera, is going to develop in the future, I think it would be in our interest to find ways to share parking resources so that we're not left with just a suburban solution here, so that we could, for example, create frontages along Rose Lane with the buildings and create a, anticipate what might happen at the shopping center, sharing parking with properties around, so that we could have a more, a site planning strategy that is more like what happens in the downtown, for example, where you've got strong street frontages and high pedestrian connectivity and, because eventually, the shopping center's going to intensify. So I think it would be in our interest to look for strategies that could encourage what's going to happen in the future. And I'd be happy to sit down one-on-one with the staff and show exactly what I'm talking about.
That would be appreciated.
I think the answer's yes.
Because I hope we can put that out front, because the parking solution's going to drive the site plan.
Okay, anything else from Mary Grace? Good presentation, thank you. Yeah, good luck on your first meeting on the 29th, and we'll try and get the word out individually as well.
Yes, too.
Yeah, great. Okay, well, we have a short agenda tonight, so at this point, I'll just take a motion to adjourn. We have motions, second?
Seconding.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.